All right. Good evening. The regular council meeting for the city of Coppers Cove held August 5th, 2025 is called to order at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the invocation by Ms. Hartz, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you could please bow with me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on ourselves and our families and our communities. Continue to keep our communities safe, Father God, in cover and protection over all our departments and our family. Continue to guide our decisions that we have to make as and make these important decisions for the city. We ask for your guidance. We ask for you to oversee those decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge for a nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Christine Ostroffus.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Sean Alzona.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Del Tredway.
Here.
Bonja Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
Okay. Quorum is present. We go to Item D, announcements. Ms. Ostroffus?
No announcements for me, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Right.
Yes, Mayor. Just Mayor and Council wanted to make sure you were aware that on Friday, Chief Wilson and I drove down to the Austin Capitol and I testified on Senate Bill Nine during their first special session. Senate Bill Nine very specifically would have reduced our rollback tax rate from three and a half percent to two and a half percent. That was later changed where it did not apply to Coppers Cove, but I did talk with them about the disabled veterans, 100% disabled veterans exemption impact to the city. And Commissioner Minor from Bell County followed it up and talked about the relief payment. So we are really trying to help move forward with our representatives and our senator, the momentum that was created from that hearing to try and gain some additional relief or relief payment from the state. Thank you.
Mr. Hale?
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing, sir.
No announcements. Okay. All right. Excuse me, we move to Item E, citizens forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section pursuant to Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right. Is there anyone to speak during citizens forum? Please state your name and address.
Ashley Wilson, 1206 West Avenue B.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to read from this, so if I read a little bit fast or if I go over five minutes, I'm sorry. All right. "I come to you tonight not only as a citizen, but also as a city employee for Coppers Cove. I am the office manager for Parks and Recreation. Some of you do know me and some of you have not had the pleasure to spend time with me personally, but I want to let you know that I take pride in the work that I do for the city. Working for the city is a vibe, and as I say, that is a vibe in terms of something positive because I feel that we are a family. We spend more time with each other than we do with our own families. But the work culture that we have built up over the last couple of years is why I believe that so many employees have stayed working for the city, as well as market adjustments, which we have always been ultimately thankful and grateful from U.S. City Council. And why am I bringing this up? I looked at the presentation for the proposed budget for tonight and seen that when it comes to balancing the budget, there was a suggestion to exclude market adjustments for employees. I understand that the citizens voted you to do a job and one of those responsibilities is to balance a budget. However, I want to say that I completely disagree with this decision, not only from a personal standpoint of view, but from a city point of view. Not giving the employees their deserved market adjustments can ultimately impact the quality of life and services for citizens. The city is already significantly lower to all other surrounding cities when it comes to market adjustments for all of our employees. As of right now, we will never be competitive to other cities, including Lampasas, who has a lower population with higher pay. If City Council does not approve market adjustments, or even does only a third of what the original adjustment is set for, it will impact the city negatively. Employee turnover rates will increase and recruitment rates will decrease. You will lose experienced and knowledgeable staff to their surrounding towns that does pay higher for the same job they're doing now. This can lead to more understaffing, delays in project, and decline in quality of services to citizens. For example, for Parks and Recreation, our fall soccer registration just ended with over 750 kids. This is one of the highest registration numbers that we've had to this date. These are not just kids from Cove, but also from surrounding towns. If our department can't keep these employees and we become even more short-staffed, we'll have to start decreasing the amount of kids that we can register or start cutting some of the smaller programs that we have. That will be revenue lost to the city and now kids left to go to surrounding towns to play sports. Just fall soccer alone is over $45,000 of revenue collected. Not only will we start to lose employees, but the ones that stay will start to see a huge low morale when it comes to working for the city. And this is what I mentioned before, when we have a vibe. Not with vibe right now, now within the city, it comes from working here. I love what I do, I love who I work for, I love who I work with, and I can pretty much tell you that majority of the other employees feel the same way. Employees will come to work just to collect that same paycheck they've been collecting for the last two years, but now with little to no care in the quality of work that they can put forward because that pride for working here can be gone. You'll start to hear people say things like, "Why put in the extra effort when there's no recognition or reward? Why should employees continue to go above and beyond without compensation or appreciation in return? Yes, it's a job and we all have responsibilities and we're all replaceable and we're all here to do the work. But for the past two years, dedicated employees have gone above and beyond their roles pushing past their regular duties to make sure the job gets done. Some did it to prove their value, to show their worth, the promotion, or that long-awaited market adjustment. We all carried out that bag line in our job descriptions, other duties as assigned, and we've been patiently waiting two years to see that extra effort acknowledged in a meaningful way. At the end of the day, U.S. City Council have a responsibility to the citizens to maintain a balanced budget, but as employees, we also serve those same citizens and have a responsibility to provide consistent, high-quality service. If the city begins to lose revenue or faces increased salary expenses due to high turnover rate, the responsibility ultimately falls on those who chose not to support market adjustments. This decision is in your hands, and I hope you'll consider that tonight's vote impacts not only the upcoming fiscal year, but sets a precedent for the years ahead." Thank you. Okay, bye.
Is there anyone else to speak during citizens forum? All right, we will close that section. We will move to Item F, consent agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item One, consideration and action on approval of City Council workshop meeting minutes for July 15th, 2025. Ashley Osborne, Deputy City Secretary. Item Two, consideration and action on approval of City Council regular meeting minutes for July 15th, 2025. Ashley Osborne, Deputy City Secretary. Item Three, consideration and action to authorize payment for eligible expenses to the Coppers Cove Chamber of Commerce on FY 2024-25 activities and expenses associated with the Rabbit Fest. Beth Galick Carney, President of the Coppers Cove Chamber of Commerce. Item Four, post-event report and request to authorize payment for eligible expenses to not rich but enriched on FY 2024-25 activities and expenses associated with the All Makes and Models Car and Bike Show with Beard and Stash Charity Competition. Nikki Withworth-Rizzola, not rich but enriched. Item Five, consideration and action on awarding a bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Adams Materials and Excavation LLC for the award of bid number PW 2024-06-76, Rumblewood Estates Drainage Improvements Project. Scott Osborne, Director of Public Works. Item Six, consideration and action authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the city's water distribution generators installation project agreement with EPX Group LLC. Scott Osborne, Director of Public Works. Item Seven, consideration and action to set the date to adopt the tax rate for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget. Item Eight, consideration and action on setting a public hearing date on the proposed tax increase for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Counsel, is there any item posted for consent agenda that you wish to pull and consider separately? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approve the consent agenda items F1 through F8.
Second? Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Hale. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Move, there is no public hearings under Item G, so we will move to Item H, action items.
Item One, consideration and action on adoption of ordinance number 2025-21 of the City Council of the City of Coppers Cove, Texas, awarding the sale and authorizing the issuance of City of Coppers Cove, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2025, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a pay-in agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa. Sorry for the long title. Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, City Manager, everyone in the audience and those listening. Ordinance number 2025-21 authorizes the City of Coppers Cove to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for 2025. This issuance is a key component of the city's capital funding plan outlined in the fiscal year 2425 budget. The certificates will finance a range of important projects, including equipment, facility improvements, and construction that supports the city's infrastructure and services. The repayment schedule is structured in a way to align with the expected lifespan of the assets included, seven years for equipment and vehicles, and 20 years for facility improvements and construction projects. This approach follows the city's debt policy and supports sound financial management. The property tax rate, which was adopted last August, already includes the debt service for tax-supported projects. Payment related to water, sewer, sideways, drainage, and street maintenance will be covered by their respective enterprise revenues. The city's strong financial position is reflected in its AA bond rating, which was recently reaffirmed by the rating agency Standards &amp; Poor's. Bids for these certificates were due today. Final pricing and terms will be presented to City Council by our financial advisor with specialized public finance, Gary Kimball, which is on the Zoom call. We also have Glenn Opal, our legal advisor, on the call if you have any legal questions. So right now, I'll turn it up to Gary.
Thank you, Arianna. Can everyone hear me okay?
No.
Just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to Zoom in tonight. Both your bond attorney and I are double booked tonight, and I'll explain why that's the case here in a little bit. I did want to amplify the bond rating affirmation. Standard &amp; Poor's was very complimentary about the city's, quote, "stable financial performance with exceptionally strong reserves and liquidity, supported by conservative budgeting practices, effective budgeting oversight, and comprehensive long-term planning." That's high praise coming from Wall Street, and the results of the bid bear that out. We received six bids, which in this market is an exceptional result. We have had a lot of changes to school finance in Texas in the recently ended legislative session, which forced so many districts in the state to rush deals to market that volume has gone up ninefold versus what a regular amount of volume in the summertime for Texas would be. So we're competing with a lot of permanent school fund guaranteed AAA paper that we wouldn't normally have to compete against, and so the six bids is extraordinarily well-received by the market. RW Baird &amp; Company submitted a low bid with a net interest cost of 4.24%. That compares favorably to the 4.7% rate we used for budgeting purposes. In dollar terms, that is $1,074,000 to the good over the life of the transaction, which is about $54,000 per year of interest better than budget. Would recommend council award the sale of its certificates of obligation to RW Baird &amp; Company at a rate of 4.24%, and I would be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Counsel, any questions for Gary? From top to bottom, the bottom, the best bid was 4.237, the highest bid was 4.299, which tells you it was extremely competitive. And I think some of the comments that Gary made were indicative of the work of Arianna and her team, Ryan, and working with the council to get to the position that we are in right now. It weren't always that way, but we are doing much, much better these days, and I think that could be borne out. Gary, you know the history of Cove. You can verify that, I believe.
When I started working on the city's behalf in 1993, you weren't even investment-grade, and now you are two notches from AAA. So it's been a great ride. It's great to have good product to work with and good people to work with, and your oversight has been complimented by Wall Street.
All right. Kim, did you have a comment?
I'll just add that to add Velius Key's team and finance in there, and of course, all the directors and their teams, because that's part of the financial management. So thank you, counsel, for your support on this as well. This is probably the largest bond issuance that we've issued that is supported directly from taxes and our rates, not some other commitment from another governmental agency.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a motion being made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2025-21, authorizing the proposed issuance and sale of obligations to be designated as City of Coppers Cove, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificate of obligation, Series 2025.
Second? Motion made by Mr. Alzona, seconded by Mr. Hale. Tredway?
Yeah. It was unanimous between us.
It was a tie.
It was a tie.
Any other questions or discussions? All right, hearing then, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Night.
Night. All right, we're going to go a little bit out of order instead of H2. We're going to move to H9. Is that right? Yes, H9. Did I catch you off guard, Lisa?
No, sir.
Okay. You want to read it?
If I can find it, hold on. Discussion and direction on the City Council's proposed changes to the FY 2025-26 proposed budget and plan of municipal services. Ryan Havela, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and council, last Thursday on July 31st, we held a special council meeting. During that special council meeting, we presented to council the results of the certified property tax appraisals and values that we received, as well as the tax rate calculations. We reviewed a number of changes to the general fund and some other funds, and during that discussion, City Council asked for some additional information, asked how impacts would, options would impact the general fund and our property owners in Coppers Cove as well, because they're the ones who pay those taxes. So our budget committee team, we sat down and through the weekend, we worked on a lot of information and data, and this is what, that's what we're going to present to you tonight. So we're actually going to start with the taxpayer financial impact chart, which is the last slide here, and I want to walk the council through this and provide some explanation on this so that as we get to the general fund impacts, you will have a basis and understanding of what the tax rate does to our residents that own property and pay property taxes in town. So this is based on an average homestead taxable value of $208,210. That average value comes straight from the appraisal districts, which is the Corial and the Lampasas Central appraisal districts. That goes to our tax assessor collector, Justin Cruthers, and he helps prepare some of the tax rate calculations. The first row on there is the current tax rate, so that's what our current tax rate is right now. There is a cost that the typical property owner, the average property owner, would pay in taxes last year. That would have been $1,336. So if City Council, as an example, was to consider adopting the current tax rate of 66 cents, there would still be a $40 increase in that tax bill to that average homestead property annually. Yeah, that's an annual cost. The next one is the no new revenue tax rate. This is important because every year, we must calculate what those rates are. Mrs. Beckman did a great job of providing an explanation and going through the calculation of what that no new revenue tax rate is on Thursday. But just as a reminder, what it means is, based on the average taxable value, that should be the tax rate for the average property to not have any increase in taxes. So that's why you see 1,336 at that 64 cent tax rate. The third rate there is that voter approval rate, and again, as Mrs. Beckman explained, that's a three and a half percent increase in the operations component of the tax rate. That was, that equates to 73 cents and an increase, annual increase in the tax payment of $189. The fourth rate that you see there is 71 cents, and that came from Councilmember Hogan on Thursday, who asked, "What is the impact of a 71 cent tax rate?" You can see there, it's $142 annually to the average property. The next three are options that I wanted to present to council as they were not discussed on Thursday, but as you asked the question, I wanted to bring you other options as well. So that next one is debt plus NNR, and so that's the debt rate. Just as a reminder, state law says that local governments must pay their annual debt service. There is no other option not to pay it. We have to do that. So that's what that debt rate is, plus the no new revenue tax rate for the operations side, which is the govern, which is the general fund side. So it's the tax rate so that we can pay all of our current debt service next year, plus the no new revenue, so no tax increase on the operations piece. That equates to just over 71 cents, and that's a $157 annual increase in the tax bill. The next two are very similar to that, except every fund that we have, and we do fund accounting, and we've talked with council about all the different funds we have. We have the general fund, we have the water and sewer fund, the solid waste fund. Each of those funds has a fund balance. We have a debt service fund. That debt service fund has a fund balance after our calculations for next fiscal year of $1.9 million. The only thing we can do with that fund balance is pay off debt. That's all we can do with it. City Council allocated $1 million in the current year, also, very similarly, from the fund balance, so that we could help reduce that tax rate for the debt service component. So consider utilizing $1 million out of the fund balance in the debt service fund, reduce that tax rate in order to service the debt for next year, and consider the voter approval rate for the operations component, which is the general fund component. That gets us a tax rate of 68 cents and change. That represents a $93 increase to the average homestead. The last option there is very similar, utilize $1 million in fund balance in the debt service fund, and consider the no new revenue rate calculation for the general fund. That's at 67 cents, and that is a $61 increase on the average homestead value. Before we move on, Mayor and council, do you all have any questions about this chart?
Questions? I just want to stress what you said, Ryan, that these numbers over on the right, 40, 189, 142, those are annual numbers based on a taxable value of $208,000. Obviously, if your house is valued at more, then it would incrementally increase, but these are annual, an annual increase, not a monthly increase, but an annual increase. So when you're looking at these, it's fairly nominal. I'm not making, I'm not sliding anything, I'm just saying that that's fairly nominal in comparison to what other things have costed us in the past, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we're going to move on to the area where you can see some of the impacts, and I'm going to describe this spreadsheet first, and then we're going to work it together, okay? So the top portion of this is just a very fast summary of the general fund, and this is the proposed budget. So we start off with $12 million in fund balance. We have revenues of $24 million, expenses of $25 million, and ending fund balance of $11 million. Our ideal fund balance, just as a reminder what that is, that is a requirement in our ordinance of setting aside three months of expenditures, or 25% of the operating expenditures, as a rainy day fund, as an emergency savings account, however you want to characterize that. We are above that ideal fund balance by $5 million in the general fund, and the very last line there shows that revenues over expenditures, which is what we call the deficit, is $800,000. So that is what we, what I prepared and presented to City Council with the help of our team and made sure that when we presented this, it was very clear to the council that it include that $800,000 deficit. The next column to the right, it says with changes fiscal year 25-26. That column in that little table right there is going to begin changing as we select options that are below that. So as we begin selecting an option with a Y, which means yes, we want to include that, we're going to start seeing that table change. So I'm going to swing all the way to the right on this spreadsheet and just look at the graphs. For those of us that are more graphically inclined to understand things, this is just a graphical representation of what we saw in that original table. The left side is the proposed budget, revenues and expenses, and then the right side is with those changes that we'll eventually make. And when we scroll down and we look at the deficit, I wanted to really highlight and touch on that deficit as we talk with council. Again, left side is the proposed budget, right side will be with those changes, and we'll see that move as we walk through this. So if we can scroll back to the left side and look at those options, it's going to start off with revenues and looking at those revenues, and we're just going to do a little bit of show and tell real quick. Interest revenue is going to increase by $70,000 from what we included in the proposed budget. Finance Department has renegotiated with our bank, and Ms. Key did a great job. Finance department has renegotiated with our bank, and Ms. Key did a great job of being able to procure, well, not procure, but ensure that we can gain more interest earnings off of our idle cash than what we are currently experiencing. So we're going to put a Y in that column Y, and you'll see as that is selected, that table above it has changed, where the revenue increased and that deficit at the bottom has decreased. So that's just to illustrate how this worksheet functions. The other revenue components below that interest are all of those tax rate options that we just reviewed in that bar chart. It's exactly the same, and it illustrates what the financial impact is to the general fund. So if the no new revenue tax rate was considered by council and adopted, it would decrease revenue in the general, in the proposed budget for the general fund by 1.1 million dollars. Sorry, the, the current tax rate, yeah, 1.1 million dollars, the no new revenue tax rate would decrease it by 1.5 million dollars from what we prepared and put in that proposed budget. As we move down in that list, then we get to expenses, and city council specifically talked about the impacts and considerations on expenses. First was the market pay adjustment options, and one of the requests was, what is the impact of reducing the market adjustments? And it's, this is only the impact to the general fund. Whatever we do in the general fund, it affects all of the other funds. So if we reduce market adjustments in the general fund by two-thirds, all of the other funds are going to have a two-thirds reduction in those market adjustments as well. And so we also did an option of reducing it by one-third, so that would be a 33% reduction in what the planned adjustments are. And then, instead of just reducing those pays, maybe delaying the market adjustments by a number of months. And so I have added, when, and we, our team has added, two-month delay, a three-month delay, six-month delay, and an eighth-month delay. And you can see that delay in eight, eight months is the exact equivalent of a two-thirds reduction in the market adjustments, because eight months is two-thirds of the year. If we do a delay on those market adjustments, the public safety step, which is a program that city council's adopted, it's a two and a half percent adjustment every single year, except when there is a market adjustment that's being done for public safety, that those step adjustments would also be delayed by however long we delay those market adjustments as well. And all of those numbers play out there. Thank you to HR and Ms. Beckman for working and preparing those numbers. The next section is changes in annual cost. So we had previously talked with city council about the hosted website. City council funded a new website for the city, and it's looking good. I'm, I'm really excited to when that website goes live and get rid of the old clunky, clunky website that we have right now. But there's an option of adding that chatbot, which is basically kind of an AI service of being able to scour our website, including our code of ordinance and our charter, so that if somebody had a question about anything within our, our website or our charter and ordinances, that, that question, very much like AI, would be answered in a very similar manner, because it has an algorithm that goes through our, all of our data and information. And then the next item there is PIP change for assistant city managers. As we have been going through the discussions on the budget, city council completed my review and specifically asked me to look at assistant city managers. As I've shared with you, it is becoming more and more difficult to achieve what city council wants and desires for our residents and providing.
Recording stopped.
I know, right? Don't say anything. Are, are we going to keep recording? Sorry, everyone. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now I got to think back to where it was. Oh, yes. So during our discussion on Thursday, city council provided me direction to provide options to assign additional duties to existing leaders in the city as assistant city managers, and that, that does come with a cost. And it's both salary benefits and other costs to perform those duties, such as additional training or something like that. And so that equates to $112,000. City council also asked during Thursday's discussion to bring up the non-city agencies as part of this discussion. So we've listed all those, we've put down in the general fund those amounts that were specifically requested, and on the right side, amounts that are listed there. These are not city councils directed amounts, okay? What those amounts are, are simply amounts that I've plugged in so that it equals what we've got in the proposed budget, because of how this whole formula and table works, it's, it's very complicated, but we do, we had to make it work somehow. So the city council, we will be asking you specifically what allocations you want for all of those organizations as we walk through this. And then the last section is the one-time cost. So these are costs that we're only going to experience one time. And the first one is that Allen House matching grant, matching funds for grants. City council executed a lease agreement with the Copper's Cove Historical Society. As part of that contractual agreement, city council agreed to match, to provide funds as matching funds to grants that the historical society secures, and it's up to $150,000. So trying to leverage those funds for way more grant funding, i- in other words. The second item there is that tax increment zone agreement. We presented that to city council months ago. City council said, let's move forward with doing that study and establishing some TERS zones. And then the strategic marketing plan, which came out of the Economic Development Corporation's strategic plan. City council wanted to move forward with that. That would be in partnership with the EDC, as well as that TERS effort also. And then the second to last item there is contract labor for Roadie Park. This was presented to city council during the workshop, excuse me, the retreat in February of this year. That will specifically be used to bring on an individual to do all of the corporate fundraising, to help raise funds to construct Roadie Park. And then the last item there is the digital conversion of records. This is the most recent one. Because of all the rains that we've experienced over the years, but specifically in the last month, we really saw some negative impact or water intrusion into our records room, and we have a responsibility to secure those records. This will scan those records, keeping them at least in a digital format secured, and then we still have to work on securing the physical permanent records at some point as well. But this will be that fallback security that we need for those records, and it's a one-time cost also. So with that being said, mayor and council, we are looking for your direction. This worksheet, we can play with it in terms of selecting different options, unselecting options, seeing how it impacts the overall general fund, and I'll turn it over to y'all for discussion and direction.
All right, council, if you have a recommendation, let me know, and I'll recognize you, and we can plug that in and see how that affects the, the overall budget.
And Mr. Mayor, can we look at the tax rate of 0.686419? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have a parks master plan in the works right now, so I think we can hold off on the Roadie Park, hiring a consultant for that, so we can take that $100,000.
Okay, say that again.
We have a parks master plan that's, that's in the works.
Okay.
Is that right, Ryan?
Yes, sir. City council has funded a parks master plan, will be eventually working on that RFP to bring on a consultant.
I, I think that's going to be happening soon, probably early next year, at least get started. So I think we can eliminate the $100,000 for the consultant for Roadie Park. It's, it's, Ryan knows where it is there.
Is that, was that part of it?
No, sir. The, the $100,000, while Mr. Smith is talking about the master plan, which would help identify what amenities and what we want our parks to look like in the future, the $100,000 is to begin the fundraising effort for Roadie Park, which even with the, the master plan, that's, I totally understand that and totally get that, you know, we should look at that master plan. Roadie Park has already, to an extent, been master planned, and, and I would encourage Mr. Stoddard to come up and talk about the two differences between the master plan and the contract services.
Thank you, Ryan. So it is a difference, the master plan that we will be, be getting vendors for will not consist of, they won't be touching Roadie Park. Roadie Park, for the best part, has already been master planned, as Ryan said. The $100,000 would be the consultant that would come in and work to bring in the funding for Roadie Park. So the master plan that we're going to be funding within the next six, six months or so will not include anything for Roadie Park. So there, it's two completely separate things.
Keep in mind, Roadie Park is primarily planned as a privately funded park, and that's what that money's for, is to, for someone to help raise the funds to be able to, to do Roadie Park, which is a, an adaptive park.
Park and sports.
Park and sports.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody understand that? Okay.
Ariana, can we add the, the annual cost for the website chatbot and the assistant city managers to that total, and then the one-time cost, add all of those to that total as well? So we can see.
And if, and if I may, if we can scroll over to the chart on the right at the bottom and look at what that impact is, I, I think it's important that city council understand the difference between operating deficits and one-time cost deficits. So those one-time costs, that is a purpose of what fund balance could be used for, as well as emergencies. But this really illustrates and highlights that, you know, the, the ongoing operating cost would be at a deficit of around 300,000, but those one-time costs, it's 418,000.
And so that deficit would then come out of the extra over/under our required fund balance, is that correct? The 700?
Out, out of the fund balance, yes, ma'am.
Yes. Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As it stands right now, does this include the full market adjustment? No reduction in that, as it looks right now?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ryan, does that include having the $1 million from the fund balance in the interest, you know, for, for payment of, of debt?
Ye- yes, sir. That, that option on row 161 includes utilizing a million dollars in the debt service fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other scenarios?
Mr. Mayor? When we go to the non-city organizations, there is one that's not checked, I think it was like $20,000. Was there a reason we left that out?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ozon, the only reason I left that out is because that, that is a new request, and just considering where we're at in the budget and city council's historical allocations on non-city organizations, trying to focus on what the city has typically in the past allocated funding towards, this in no way is trying to tell council, you shouldn't allocate funding to that. Again, I just plugged those numbers in for those non-city organizations, as had historically been allocated by city council. And since we're on non-city agencies, if I may continue, mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Treadway contacted the Hill Country Community, excuse me, Hill Country Transit District, the HOP, and they had verbally acknowledged that they would be able to reduce that initial request of 94,000 by $5,000. Since then, Mrs. Beckman and I spoke with the HOP, and they have not only acknowledged, but they sent us in writing that their funding allocation request of the city will be only $85,000 for next year.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five thousand. So if you're okay, we can change that right now, and you, you'll see the impact of the total amount for non-city agencies, as well as on the budget.
And Ryan, that does, that does not portend any reduction in services, is that correct?
Quite the contrary to what the general manager told me. He said that it'd be a cost of 85,000, and they are working to expand service within that contribution.
Anything else anybody wants to see? So that changes, with those changes, that makes the deficit 721,807, which would be covered under general funds, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir. And I'm probably going to sound like a broken record, just to distinguish, 418,000 of that is one-time cost, and just over 300,000 is ongoing operational cost.
So we won't have those next year, correct?
That's correct.
Do you, anybody want to see anything different? Okay.
City council, mayor and city council, if there's nothing else you want to see on that, I would ask that you focus on the non-city organizations at this point, and provide allocations for those amounts and those requests.
Council, you want to leave and put the request for Boys and Girls Club at 10,000, or change that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to change half, or, so just go half with all the agencies. So if we go back to Boys and Girls Club, go to 7,500, and then for the senior center, go into 5,000.
I'm sorry, the Boys and Girls 7,500 or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then 5,000 for Hill Country.
The next one, the next one down.
And leave, New Exchange Club at 2,000, or?
The New Exchange Club's 2,000.
Okay.
And then Cove House?
Is that the way you envisioned, is that what you, what you requested?
Yeah, we spoke with them.
Yeah, I spoke, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to point out that the Hill Country Community Action Association is Meals on Wheels for elderly, that, you know, they get meals delivered to their house and checked on every day, and they've been at 10,000 for many years now, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to cut their budget in half on that personally. I would rather take it from somewhere else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm also adding to that with the senior center and the Meals on Wheels program, looking into the future of next year, of the meals that are not going to be brought, retailed out, they're going to be home meals. We do need to consider. We do need to consider there may be an, an increase in the services, that, that could likely happen, but there will, there should be somewhat of a reduction in regards to the meals, since they're being prepared. And there's something about matching costs, too, I remember hearing. Is that correct?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, with the Hill Country Community Action Association, the amount that we contribute, they leverage our contribution for additional federal dollars. And in, in response to what Ms. Hart just stated, in terms of its being, its new fresh-prepared meals, one of the things that you, as a council, historically, and I'm, I'm talking years back, have asked HCCAA is, if we give you more money, can you serve more people? And HCCAA's response in the past has been no, because they were constrained by the preparation space that they had at our previous senior center. And I would just venture to say, they are going to have reduced costs of the per meal cost for fresh-made meals, but they now have the ability to expand that service where they haven't been able to do that in the past.
So is there a request to change that, or not?
Mr. Mayor, I, I feel like this five thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, six thousand, whatever these numbers are we're looking at right now, like, change compared to the overall budget, where we really, like, these agencies need that money. And I think this is just such a small portion that we're, we're nickel-and-diming them away, and we're not helping the big picture. So honestly, I'm in favor of giving them more than what we've got on there right now. That's my opinion. Like, the Boys and Girls Club, more money, yeah, the Senior Center. I'd be in favor of bumping them up. Maybe not the full amount they're asking for, but closer to what, what they are asking for than taking away.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I understand what Sean's saying, and I can agree with him to a point, but a lot of these are nonprofit organizations. They're responsible for going out and raising their own funds. Okay, we're a city. We provide services to the entire community. That's water, sewer, streets, police, fire protection, and of course, pay increase for the employees. We have to take care of our own home first before we can start helping other outside agencies. I don't mind helping them, okay, at, at, to a point, but we can't just keep giving and giving every year when we got to start taking care of our communities just as well. You know, I agree with the prices we had up there before, but then again, that's my two cents.
So the HOP is, that, that's been reduced, and that's been in cooperation with, working with Hill Country Transit District, Community Action, Meals on Wheels. Is it possible to put that back at ten? Is it, and I'm asking the council, is it possible to put it back?
Yes, please.
I agree.
Is there any other one? Okay, let's leave that. Any other proposed changes you'd like to see? Okay. So this would be the direction.
Mayor, based on the discussion we've had, yes, all the items that we have selected with a Y for yes, to include those as changes to the proposed budget, that's what we will move forward with in preparing the final budget for adoption on the nineteenth. And just to recap real quick, that includes the additional interest revenue, includes a proposed tax rate of six eight point six eight six four one nine, which is the utilization of half a million dollars in debt service fund balance, and equates to the voter approval rate for the operations or general fund side, including the additional annual cost for the website, the ACMs, the non-city organizations, as illustrated on the screen there with those allocations, and the additional one-time cost overall. And with that, Mayor, we will move forward with that, unless city council has any other comments or direction.
You, you, you did say half a million, right? I think, I think you said a half a million.
Did I say half a million?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Okay.
One million.
I just wanted to check.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say, Ryan, it looks like you made math kind of fun, with charts moving and numbers moving. You might consider teaching. I like it. I'm, I'm kind of a spreadsheet nerd myself, so.
I'm glad you had fun, sir.
All right, we will move forward.
Mrs. Beckman, can you leave that chart up there on the tax rates? Because that's the next item that we'll cover.
Okay, so since we discussed that now, we need to go back to H two.
Consideration and action of a record vote to propose a property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Ariana Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa. Under Section twenty-six oh five B of the Texas Tax Code, when a proposed tax rate exceeds the lower of the non-yo revenue tax rate or the voter approval rate, the governing body must take a record vote to propose that tax rate. Another legal requirement is that council must also set a date for public hearing on the proposed tax rate, which was part of the consent, and that date is set for August the nineteenth. The city will then publish a notice about this hearing, so we can inform the public. Staff recommends that council takes, takes the record vote to propose a property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Again, tonight, you're only proposing a tax rate. The adoption of the tax rate will be on August nineteenth.
All right, council. Is there a proposed tax rate? And this would be a record vote, so each person would be voting on the record. And the proposal that you had proposed was point zero six eight six four one nine, if I saw that correctly. Yes? Okay.
Do we need to make a motion with that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we propose a tax rate of zero point six eight six four one nine.
Second.
Is that enough? Okay, motion made and a second. Any other discussion? All right, this is a record vote, so you'll call the names.
Christina Strophas?
Aye.
Rita Hogan?
Aye.
Sean Alzona?
Aye.
John Hale?
Aye.
Del Treadway?
Aye.
Fanya Hart?
Aye.
Jack Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right. I think y'all are all happy, aren't you? Everybody happy? All right. All right, item, we move on. Item H three has been pulled. Is that correct, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We move to item H four.
Consideration and action authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement with Texas Home Pro LLC to complete the renovation of the municipal court. James Neely, Parks Superintendent.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you, Ms. Lisa. In February of twenty twenty-four, the city council authorized the city manager to execute a public services agreement with elements of architecture to develop the renovation plans for the municipal court building. Staff began the renovation efforts in January of twenty twenty-five, with phases one and two completed the renovation excluding the carpet and the flooring. On June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, staff posted bid number twenty twenty-five eleven forty-one. On July twenty-first, we opened those bids, receiving four bids in total. We do have some ad alternates in here. All the ad alternates are the same. I'm going to go, cover the base bid, what the ad alternates is, and then the total bid at the end, just so I don't have to read each line item as we go down. So the ASD consultants, their base bid was nine hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars, with the alternates of paint, coating the roof, gutter replacement, and exterior door replacements, bringing their total bid to one million eighty-six dollars six hundred and twenty-six. A-Fresh Vision Contractors did provide a bid in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five forty-four dollars, but they did not provide a bid bond, therefore disqualifying them from our bidding process. The next bid was Seneca Construction in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight three forty-six. Their ad alternates was exterior paint, roof coating, gutter replacement, exterior doors, bringing their total to four ninety-seven zero one two nine four. And then Texas Home Pro LLC with a base bid of one hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Their ad alternates also were exterior paint, roof coating, gutter replacement, exterior doors and steps, bringing their total bid to two hundred seventy-one thousand two eighty-nine thirty-five. City staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a construction agreement with Texas Home Pro in the amount of two hundred seventy-one dollar, or seventy-one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine and thirty-five cents. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for James?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I was just wondering for the gutter replacement. I was looking at throughout the bids, and I'm just curious of the seven thousand seven hundred gutter replacement compared to the other prices. It seems just a little bit low, and I was just wondering, why is there such a discrepancy between?
So some contractors, they will run the trades in conjunction, therefore lowering, lowering their pricing. We have seen it where one will quote astronomically high on, let's say, the ceiling, and then be cheaper on the framing, just because they have the same trades doing the work. Overall, when we done the pre-bid walk, we walked all the contractors through, showed them all the guttering that needed to be replaced, or repaired, I should say. They all had the opportunity to bid it. Texas Home Pro feels that they can do it for the seven thousand seven hundred, therefore, that is the recommendation. As far as why they're, you know, particularly cheaper on that line item, I would not be able to answer that.
Can you be able to answer that for me, please? Please, thank, um, Mr. Mayor, you were in the front, or?
You, you want to make a comment? Sure, go ahead.
There's a microphone right there. Yes, please, thank you.
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. To answer the question is, we do lots and lots of gutters, lots and lots of roofing, and we use a local company for all of our Norandex aluminum, so we get good prices on it. That's why it's probably cheaper than everybody else's. We do volumes, because we do residential and commercial, we get a really good price on our gutters.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions for James? All right, is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a construction agreement with Texas Home Pro LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Alzona, seconded by Ms. Hogan, correct? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move to item H five.
Consideration and action on Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, authorizing the city manager to enter to an inter-local agreement with the Region sixteen Education Service Center statewide cooperative purchasing program, known as TechSby, for the purpose of purchasing items that have been selected through a bidding process. Stephanie Potvin, Assistant Director of Finance.
Good evening, city council, mayor, city manager. Before you tonight is a resolution for the, an inter-local agreement with Region sixteen Education Services for the purchasing co-op known as TechSby. The city is currently a member of several co-ops, so this is nothing new for us. We're part of Texas Cooperative Purchasing, Texas Buy Board, Houston Galveston area, as just a few. Our local government code, chapter two fifty-two, establishes that a purchase under an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing administered by a commission such as these satisfies the city's legal requirement to competitively bid purchases. So by entering into this local agreement with TechSby, it's going to give the city a bigger pool of contracts that are already competitively bid and a wider range. So there is no charge to join the co-op, so we're recommending that the city council approve Resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen, authorizing the city manager to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Region sixteen Cooperative Purchasing Program, known as TechSby.
So no cost?
There is no cost, that is correct.
And possibility of increased services?
That is correct.
Sounds like a good deal. All right, any other questions, or any questions for Stephanie? All right, is there a motion to be made on item H five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we recommend approve the Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, authorizing the city manager to enter into an inter-local agreement with Region sixteen ESC statewide cooperative purchasing program, known as TechSby.
Second.
Motion made by, Ms. Hogan, seconded by Mr.?
Jack.
Mr. Smith, how about that? Okay. Any other questions or discussions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie. We move to item H six.
Consideration and action on ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, ordering and establishing procedures for a general election on November fourth, twenty twenty-five, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Havelaw. This year's general election will be held on Tuesday, November the fourth. The city council has three positions that will be on the ballot, positions three, four, and five. The city will once again contract with Corial and Lampasas Counties for election services, and copies of those contracts, along with cost estimates, are attached to the agenda item itself. City staff recommends city council approve ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, ordering and establishing procedures for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five, general election.
All right, council, any questions for Lisa? Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, ordering and establishing procedures for a general election on November fourth, twenty twenty-five, in Carpers Cove, Texas.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Treadway. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Lisa. We move on to item H seven.
Consideration and action on authorizing submission of an application for membership into the Central Texas Water Alliance. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and council, in twenty twenty-four, Bell County Judge, Judge Blackburn presented a option to all of our regional entities about joining a alliance related to water. Eventually, it became known as the Central Texas Water Alliance, and the eighty-ninth legislature actually passed in a bill, eleven ninety-four, was signed by the governor and immediately effective on May fifteenth. That alliance is an effort to bring all of our resources, all of our influences, all of our plans together, so that as a region, we become more focused on water supply, infrastructure, and improvements. It has passed. The first meeting has occurred with, and I'm going to call it the CTWA, with the CTWA, and they have prepared an application so that we could apply to be members. so that we could apply to be members. In terms of being a member, right now, it's just completing the application and submitting it. CTWA really does not know at this moment what membership looks like in terms of status, in terms of voting rights, or in terms of financial contribution. All of that needs to be determined eventually. For our position, I think we should go ahead and submit an application so we can participate in that discussion, because we are then, at that moment, illustrating our desire to influence the activities and the governance of CTWA. So my recommendation, the staff's recommendation, is that you authorize the submission of an application.
All right, council, any questions for Ryan? Is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Authorize city council the completion, submission of application for membership consideration into the CTWA.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We move to item H-eight.
Consideration and action on approving Resolution Number twenty-two-five-dash-fourteen joining the state of Texas as a party in the Texas opioid settlement agreement secured by the Office of the Attorney General and authorizing the city manager to execute the Purdue-Texas settlement participation form. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you again, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, in 2021, the state of Texas, the Attorney General's office, began securing settlements with opioid manufacturers, distributors, marketing organizations, and several other organizations. Since 2021, a total of three-point-three billion dollars have been secured. That is just the state of Texas portion. And the way the settlements are structured as a entity within the state of Texas, we can participate, or we can choose not to participate. City council has already elected to participate in a number of previous settlements, and all of those settlements are listed within the agenda item. This settlement is with Purdue. It is one of the largest settlements that we have seen in the last couple of years. For the state of Texas, it's two-hundred-and-eighty-six million dollars. And in total, that's not a large amount when you consider it gets distributed amongst a lot of other entities. As a participating member, Copper's Cove will receive a financial contribution. That financial contribution must be used towards the opioid, what they're calling the pandemic. We, one of the ways we use that funding is to potentially purchase Narcan, which is a drug that offsets or stops the overdose of opioid or the effects of an opioid overdose. And our police department and our fire department have saved many lives as a result of that. There's also other uses, such as training and keeping our officers in our departments aware of the impacts of opioids and the trends that are going on. So staff's recommendation is that you authorize me to complete the participation form in this settlement. And in addition to that, there will be a future one coming. I've already been notified of another settlement that has been reached. We just have not been notified by the Attorney General's office, so that'll be a future agenda item in the coming months also.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions? Ryan? Okay. Is there a motion to be made on H-nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-two-five-dash-fourteen authorizing the city manager to execute the Purdue-Texas settlement participation form.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Ms. Hart. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, that concludes all the action items for tonight. There are no reports from staff, outside entities, advisory committees, and boards. Item J, items for future agendas. Strophas?
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hogan?
None for me, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hale?
I've noted this time, sir.
I've noted future agendas, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to thank city manager and rest of the staff for this last week, for the hard work. We're looking at the tax rate, especially over the weekend, because I know they put in some long hours, so I just want to thank all of them.
Okay. Ms. Hart?
Ditto and no.
Jack?
No.
Okay. All right, there is no executive session for tonight, so the time is seven-sixteen. We stand adjourned.